Be seated. Before we get started, I can ask for a moment of silence. We lost a long-serving member of our Finance Committee, Theodore Tverog. And so I'd just like to take a moment of silence to remember him. Thank you. As is our custom, we're going to start with three moderators' motions. Now, these are printed in the, what we call, the Finance Committee booklet. They're a few pages in after some budget spreadsheets. I understand that some people... I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, I was given a point of... I'll address that. I understand that we may have run out of these books, so if you don't have one and you need one, maybe you can find a friend to share. So the first motion is that the meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant, the Constable's return of service, the warrant of that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to re-warn articles verbatim, but may refer to them by number and/or subject matter. The second is that the moderator may extend the floor to town management and staff and other non-voters, provided that they must first be recognized by the moderator. And third, that the moderator pursuant to general laws, Chapter 39, Section 15, be allowed to declare a two-thirds vote rather than taking a standing count. Hearing no objections to that, those motions carry forward. Before we get started, there was a... Someone asked a point of information. They asked if the warrant articles were posted early this morning, would that have complied with the posting requirements? That's not the case. The warrant articles were posted a couple of weeks ago, as is required under mass general law, so I don't know if that person maybe just didn't see them, but they were posted at the standard places, which is what the Constable's return of service is about. He's confirming that the warrant articles were posted at the elementary school and at the town hall, as required, at Town Clerk's office and so on. So do you have a second point of information? Please step up to the microphone. And this is a good time for me to point out to everyone that I need everyone to step up to the microphone. You should always step up to the microphone if you're going to have something to say to the meeting.
Okay. Only that, I believe that Town Clerk, who is it that prepares the warrants, posted that the warrants weren't available as yet? This was, I guess, as of last Friday, Saturday, yesterday, I believe, that they were still not in their final form, the warrants?
Yes.
Were still incomplete? Is that correct?
So that's not correct. So the warrants, as I said, were posted on the 30th of May on Town Hall and here at Ruggles Lane. They were not made available on the website until recently, but posting on the web is not part of the legal requirements for posting of warrants.
Okay, so I understand then that they were posted in their correct form on time, but just not on the web?
That's correct.
Okay. Beg pardon, thank you very much.
All right. So before I go to Article 1, I understand that I have a procedural motion from the Finance Committee. May I hear that procedural motion? Go ahead.
Good. Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to move Article 7 to be the first article.
So there's a motion and a second to change the order of in which we consider these articles. The reason for this is that Article 7 is the school budget article. Depending upon what happens with that article, there may be other changes to other articles, so it will be easier for the Finance Committee and the Selectmen making their motions to already know that, so we don't have to go back and amend other things later. So is there any discussion of this motion? All those in favor of moving Article 7 to be the first motion considered, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Can the Finance Committee hand the motion to the Town Clerk? The one that you just made about moving Article 7. Anyone who makes a motion, the way it works is you say it, you sign it, and you give it to the Town Clerk, so that she has a record of it. Proceeding with Article 7, the FY '23 Omnibus Budget Schools. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise the appropriate funds as identified in the town's recommended omnibus budget relative to education as follows. Quavon Regional School Districts, $6,090,892.69. Monty Tech, $370,256. QRSD Debt Service, $47,069.
I have a motion and a second. I'll clarify that if your numbers in your book are a little different from that, it's because there were some changes made at the last minute that didn't make it into all of the printings. So I'm going to repeat those numbers for you, just so everyone's clear. The QRSD recommendation, $6,090,892.69. Monty Tech, $370,256. And Debt Service, $47,069. Do I have discussion? Sir?
Don't refer to this, no.
Then please sit down. Do I... Mr. Lipson?
You know, it's kind of interesting. But we're giving away $6 million, and it seems as though we want to get rid of it quickly. I would hope that there'd be lots of discussion and ask why it went up from $5,007,000 to $6 million, considering we have, from what I understand, we have fewer children in the school. Is that correct? And I was given wrong information. But it seems like, considering we're involved in a recession, I'm guessing, to be involved in a recession, we ought to have some thought processes about giving $6 million away. And I'm hoping that if, whenever this happens, that the people who are in support of this don't just walk out the door because they think their responsibility is finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Sir? Please state your name and your street.
My name is Matt Urban. I live on Williamsville Road. Looking in the Finance Committee booklet, at the bottom of the page, the description, the sentence doesn't end, so I'm a little confused where it speaks to, "In order to avoid having to make significant cuts to the general operating budget with the hopes that the state agrees to something." Can somebody help clarify what that meant?
Increased funding would be my guess.
I heard a response from the Board of Selectmen that the sentence should have ended to increase funding. With the hopes that the state will agree to increase funding. Yes, sir?
Why do we need the state? Are you saying there's something that the state will increase the funding to the schools on their side of the budget? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Sheila Muir, 23 Murphy Road. I move to amend the Quavon Regional School District line item budget from $6,090,892.69 to the requested amount of $6,199,860.81 to fund Barry's portion of the Quavon Regional School District budget for fiscal year 2023.
I have a motion to amend. Do I have a second? I have a motion to amend and a second. Can you please deliver that motion to amend to the Town Clerk? So now we're going to talk about the amendment. Is there any discussion of this amendment? Sir?
Good evening. Greg O'Sullivan, Select Board Member. The school budget that we've recommended is representative of their portion of our increase in total revenue this year. In other words, they receive 50-some-odd percent of our budget every year. And 50%, whatever that percentage is, of our increased revenues for this fiscal year is what we recommended in this budget. What they're requesting represents basically 100% of our revenue increase for the whole entire town. And it's going to create a hundred-and-some-odd thousand-dollar shortfall for us that we're going to have to strip away from other departments or fund some other way. Even if we take this out of stabilization, we're now using our savings account to fund a budget item. The budget item, folks, I've worked very hard here for all five years to make sure the things that we put in the budget are the things that our levy can handle in any fiscal year. And if we go $100,000 beyond that this year, that's going to stay for next year and the year after, and it's going to get more difficult to do. We can't just start giving the school an increased number of our percentage and expect the rest of the town departments to function the way we expect and want them to.
Please, no applause. Sam. Any other discussion of the amendment?
Mr. Moderator, I have some discussion. I would just like to share some numbers.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry. My name is Dan Jewell. Live at 34 Woods Road, and I am the Chair of the Finance Committee. In looking at the school's budget, I've noticed that over the past... I'm going to give you guys some numbers here. Our increase of our proposed, the Finance Committee and Town of Barry's proposed budget with $6,090,000, we'll call it, and change, that's a $317,530 increase over previous fiscal year. And a dollar amount, that's the largest increase the schools have received from the Town of Barry in at least 10 years. That's a 5.5% increase over what they received prior year. That would give them, running the numbers from, I went back as far as 2014, so 2014, I use that number because that's where our town reports are on the website. So all this information I pulled from the website. From fiscal year 2015 to fiscal year 2022, the Town of Barry increased its funding to the Quavon Regional School District by $1,280,979. That's a 28.51% increase. The school is now asking for an additional, for this year, year-over-year change, amount of $426,503, which is a 7.39% increase. Unfortunately, the Finance Committee would love to approve that number, but that does not balance our budget as a town. We have limited resources with our revenue. Our revenue is our property tax. We all pay property taxes here, and living in a rural community, our revenue, 80% of that, is from our revenue-generated property tax. I feel, and the Finance Committee feels as well, that a 5.5% increase year-over-year, this isn't... We're not trying to underfund the schools. We're actually giving them more money than we have given them year-over-year in the last 10 years. Couple of other things I would like to point out is, this is more of a systemic issue with their request for funding over the past few years. COVID year 2021, they level-funded their budget. They asked the towns for 0% increase in dollars. We can all understand COVID, absolutely. That is not a big increase. And again, I got that number from the Town Report, Town of Barry Town Report. 2022, they asked for a 1.65% increase, $93,778, which we provided. Now they're looking for an additional 7.4%. I feel if we spread that out through two fiscal years, we can get to the number they want. But right now, where we're at, we're giving them, the school district, a lot of money, and we're going to have to cut other services to the town in one way or another, or take money in from our free cash when we have a special town meeting later this year. So those are the numbers, and I just, I feel free for questions or discussion.
Yes?
Corinne Robinson.
Please step up to the microphone. Si. Can you get a little closer to the mic? Thank you.
Corinne Robinson, Wawa Net Road. In response to the gentleman who just spoke from the Finance Committee, I'd just like to say that when we're talking about percentage increases and dollars increases for education, I don't think that we should focus on percentages and dollar increases so much because there's inflation. There has been costs associated with COVID, children, you know, going to school via computer and so forth. And I'm hearing that teachers are saying that they're unable to do their jobs without the money they're requesting. And as I see it, the Town of Barry, like, major, major responsibilities to citizens, our public safety, maintaining our roads, and educating our children, like, I don't see public educating happening, like, the public education I grew up with. And many of you, I think, probably feel the same way. I would love to see public education like the public education I grew up with. I don't see it. I've had a very long professional career, working with children and in and out of public schools, and it doesn't remotely approach the kind of public education that I grew up with. And that makes me very, very sad. I'd like to see it come back to that. I'd like to see it come back to that, because I think we're raising generations of children who are lacking education. So I would love to see teachers get paid what they're worth. I would love to see more teachers having smaller classes. And I would love to see aides that can help the children that need help with reading and math. And that's what I have to say about funding education, 100% public education, what it needs to do its job.
Thank you. Any... Mr. Lipson?
When considering this opportunity to spend $6 million and bunch of change, I think we need to think about the fact that the Town of Barry committed itself in some shape or form, I don't know the finality of it, of up to $6.5 million recently at a special public meeting in regards to sewers. And I don't know, I'm hoping that my information is correct. If it isn't, I'm sure that somebody will correct me. I would hope they would. But I understand that the commitment that the Town of Barry, that was made by the town, made to the Town of Barry by the USDA of 40% matching grant or 40% grant, I understand that has been materially reduced. So for those people who are on sewer lines, be prepared for surprises. People on water lines, be prepared. And now we're asking for a budget way above what the Finance Committee has recommended. And I ask very much that you support what the Finance Committee has recommended. And if they don't recommend what the school wants, then we have the opportunity of saying no, let's renegotiate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like just to inform the voters that, yes, although it is true that the assessment to the Town of Barry has increased 7.39%, as Mr. Jewell noted, the Quavon budget increase is 2.4%. We have not increased our budget 7.9%. The reason that the cost to the member towns has increased significantly this year is primarily due to two factors. One factor is that in the last two fiscal years, because of COVID, the Quavon Regional School District achieved some savings. And at the end of the fiscal, as we were planning for the future fiscal years, we used $1 million in our savings from reduced operating costs during COVID to reduce assessments to the member towns. So the assessments were lower in the last two fiscal years because we were able to realize some savings and pass those savings on to the member towns. We no longer have those savings, and we're not able to do that. Also, it's important to, just to Mr. Lipson's comment, we do have an increase of students. Our enrollment has been declining for many years, but we have 128 additional students in the school district this year, so I just, I did want to point that out. The real problem with funding schools is not about, in my opinion, and I think many would agree with me, it's not about our communities, and it's not about our school needs, it's about a gap in state funding for schools, particularly in rural school districts across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I know town officials and myself and many other folks are advocating for changes to that, but that's legislative. That needs to happen on Beacon Hill, and although we've been working for many years to make that happen, it hasn't happened yet. So again, our budget increase is 2.4%, but the gap between what the state is helping with funding schools and what the towns are expected to contribute continues to grow wider because state funding continues to decline for schools. And that's the reason that it's more challenging for our communities, and that's the reason for the difference between the budget increase, which we feel is quite moderate, and the assessment increase to our member towns.
Thank you. Any other comment? Yes, sir? Can you please step up to the microphone?
I don't need the mic.
No, you need the mic. That's our rules.
Patrick Swain, 81 Jackson Lane, Barry. I'd like to ask a couple of questions. First, I want to thank the Finance Board. You guys have a very hard job figuring budgets. I'd like to know if the school does not get that $100,000, will it lose programs or teachers will have to be laid off? That's one question.
Why don't you go ahead and ask both questions, and I'll see if you can get them answered.
And my other question is to the Finance Board, would that $100,000 really increase our property taxes over the next year? Thank you.
So the first question is, what would be the impact on the school if the assessment is lowered?
I can't specifically say what would the impact be, what would happen if we do not receive approved assessments from each of our member towns as we go through. The budget approval process is the school committee reconvenes. We continue to look for areas where we may find, be able to find savings, but I, you know, as we have already reduced from our initial budget proposals, 1.2 million out of the school district budget. So going deeper than that will mean that, it may mean that we, that there are programs that we are not able to offer. I can't, you know, this is a process that we go through with the school committee, and so I cannot speak to what the school committee may or may not approve, but there will be a process, if it's not approved, where the school committee will reconsider all of the costs that we have projected for the upcoming fiscal year and make changes if they deem that appropriate.
Thank you. The subsequent question was to the Finance Committee, how does this impact taxes if the budget is increased?
The Finance Committee is not prepared to request an override to pay for the $108,000 shortfall. What we would do is move to recommend reducing previously budgeted expenses to certain line items within the budget, and then work to try to fund those later in the year using free cash. So either way, we're not looking to raise taxes, but we are going to be taking funds, other funds from the town. We won't have a balanced budget.
We've already heard from you, Sam, twice now, so is anyone... Yes?
Can I have another question?
Please.
No one has the same question as I have before. I have another.
Mr. Moderator, Lee Radlow, Owen, it wrote, "My question is, where is Barry in the other towns voting on, member towns, voting on the Quavon budget? Where are we falling? Are we first, last, in terms of the timing of process? We're second?"
So I heard the answer was that we're the second town to consider this. Okay, Mr. Lipson. One more.
My question was, was just answered partially, is that we're the second town, so the first town to consider it, what was their decision? I'm sure that they have made some decisions. We would like to know, and I don't know if I can do this, but I would like to ask that we have a secret ballot in this regard, anything related to the schools. So I guess there's several answers we need to be provided. Thank you.
I have a motion for a secret ballot. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second for a secret ballot. Mr. Lipson, if you are making that motion, you need to write it out and provide it to the Town Clerk.
Just one of your mentions, is that a motion to make the amendment secret ballot?
That was, yes. So a motion for a secret ballot applies to the motion that's currently on the floor. The motion that's currently on the floor is the amendment. Just so everyone understands, if we have a motion, if we vote on this and we have a secret ballot, and whether it comes up or it goes down, we're not done, because this is, we're simply debating whether we're going to change the number on the original motion that we will then proceed to vote on. So the rule in Barry is seven? 10? 10. I think it's 10. We need 10 people in favor.
Mr. Moderator, am I able to make an additional comment in regards to...
Yeah, it's a debatable motion, yes. But your comment should be with regard to whether we should have a secret ballot.
No.
Okay. Hang on, let me check the quantum. Sorry, it's not 10, it's 10%. So we need to know how many people checked into town meeting? 156, which means that we would need 15 affirmative votes in order to force a secret ballot on the amendment. Is there any other, any questions about what we're voting on now? So we're going to vote on whether we should have a secret ballot on the amendment to the school budget. All those in favor of having a secret ballot on the amendment to the school budget, please stand. stand. Okay, I'm going to count them. Just stay standing, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and I presume Sam's nine. Anyone in the back standing for that? No? Yeah, I got you. The motion fails, thank you. So we are now proceeding to debate on the amendment to the school budget, sir.
Hi, Edward Kelly, 685 Gilbert Road. Couple of questions. One is, where is the increase in students coming from? Is it school choice or residents from the towns? The second one, I don't quite understand how the budget has increased, you know, 5%, whatever the number is, every year, but your explanation was that you requested a reduction in funding. And also, to clarify your point, so if we vote for the school budget, all the other departments in the town are going to have to suffer? Clarify that. Thank you.
So the first question was asked of the superintendent, do you want to answer that question? You don't have to.
So I didn't, I don't think I said that we're requesting a reduction. I said our budget increase is 2.4%. So that's an increased budget, but it's not equivalent to the increased assessment because the member towns each pay a portion of the budget, and the way the responsibility for the member town assessments is calculated is the, there's a, there's a calculation that the state provides, which is called required local contribution, and then the, that every town has to pay. It's sort of the base of the amount that the town has to pay. And on top of that, whatever additional funding the school needs, subtracted from what the state provides, the member town split. And that's how the assessment numbers are calculated. In terms of the increase in students, 116 of the 128 are member town students from our five member towns, and there are 12 additional school choice students.
And I had a question to the Finance Committee, which I've already forgot.
I believe the question, Mr. Moderator, was, would all departments suffer? And the answer, the short answer to that is no, not all departments would suffer. We're not looking at a, we're really not looking at a huge difference in dollars here. It's about $110,000 between what the school is asking and what the town can afford, and without making cuts to other departments or, or other line items on the budget.
Thank you. Mr. O'Sullivan, you had a comment?
I just want to follow up again. There was a question earlier about will it raise our taxes, and probably not this year, but most likely next year. As I said, we, we try to take our revenues and fund all of our spending, except for purchases for capital items, which is separate, and we find ways to, you know, fund those. And we also fund those with budgeted payments within our levy. If we spend beyond the levy, we're going to have to increase the levy. We cannot dip into savings account endlessly until it's gone. It's taken several years. When I started here in the board, I think we're in the 170-some-odd thousand in stabilization, and we've built it up to about $800,000, which is considered a normal, healthy amount where it should stay if we need it. If we start taking $100,000 a year out of that now, and then the same 100 next year, because we'll have the same shortage, it would just be a few short years till our stabilization is gone. So we cannot fund our budget outside of the levy. We need to stay within that levy, or we need to increase that levy. So if we do go up $108,000 in the budget this year, we probably will see an increase in taxes next year. We typically stay below the proposition two and a half levy limit. We don't increase taxes that much. But next year, I think we surely would have to, if this goes through, and perhaps be asking for more, but I don't know for sure if it would be more. But it would certainly increase the levy amount, so that we're not dipping into stabilization every year for this.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I please make an additional comment?
What's that?
Can I, can I make a comment, please?
Yes.
So in regards to what the superintendent stated regarding the assessment of the town, right? The Finance Committee, when I volunteered two years ago to join the committee, I didn't expect to be right here, but I, I was just like everybody else in this room. Like, where are my tax dollars going, right? And as I got into this, and I thought I was going to find, oh, man, ridiculous spending all, all throughout the town, and money going everywhere, right? I found the actual opposite. Like, we run very lean. All of our departments run lean. Education runs lean. Our goal is to provide a balanced budget to the town that works for us and, and the income that we have coming in throughout the property taxes. I, I challenge a little bit what the superintendent stated about the assessment and how they use their savings. You know, in hindsight, it may not have been the appropriate move, because if the assessments to the town were 2.5% in '21, 2.5% in '22, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. But instead, the assessment to the Town of Barry was 0% in '21, and the assessment to the Town of Barry is 1.65% in '21, uh, '22. And now we're looking at a 7.43%. So it's not like, it's not like those, those savings were alluded to anything, we just pushed off the funding. And now they're looking for, the school district needs a larger portion of funding, rather than have a level, more of a rolling fund, right? Over a few years, they're trying to fund everything in one year.
Sir.
Good evening. My name is Mark Brophy, 90, Robles Lane, also a member of the Quavon Regional School Committee, presently the chair. I'd like to be able to make a couple of comments in regards of the budget perspective, and what and where the monies go, and what our obligations are as not only a community, but as being part of the Quavon Regional School District. We have five towns, and it's a portioned budget through a perspective. The, the aim of the, not only the mission and the vision of the Quavon Regional School District in regards to fiscal management, financial appropriation, developing programs that are appropriate for children, not only in preschool, as early as grades three, all the way to '22, are our obligations with special education. We build our budget on a needs basis, not a want basis. I've been on the committee for 15 years, and over time, we will continue, we have, and we will always work with our towns and our committees. But there is a bona fide school committee of 15 members. Five from Barry, four from Hubbardston, three from Hardwick, two, uh, three from, four from Hubbardston, three from Hardwick, two from Oakham, and one from New Braintree. There is, based on proportion, same with the assessments as they do. The realities are that our budget is going up 2.4% overall. There is, and there are, the formula perspectives. There is the obligation of the state. This is the truth. Nobody is lying or making up figures in regards to how things have been pushed down to us. We are not a Worcester, we're not a Fall River, we're not a New Bedford, we're not a Boston, we're getting hundreds, I mean, I'm talking millions and millions of additional funding under the Student Opportunity Act. Yes, they do deserve that, because that's where the tremendous amount of needs are of, and with poverty, as well as with educational needs, second language acquisition learners, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But the realities are that in FY, I'm going to go back to FY '18 to start. Our budget increase for dealing with 2,000 students, 1.8% FY '18, 2% FY '19, FY '20, FY '21, half a, half a percent. FY '22, 1.7%. This year, 2.4%. It is based on, and is, again, as I mentioned, the apportionment of the towns. Barry, the representation of the Quavon Regional School District, is 38%. I should say, I apologize, 39%. 39% of the budget represents Barry students. Hubbardston, 26%. Hardwick, 16%. Oakham, 11.7%. New Braintree, 6%. Regardless of where a student lives in the five towns, they have, that child, student, and our children had access to those programs regardless if you're a 6% apportionment or 39% of Barry. Again, we build our budget for priorities and values. We have our resources for our students, and I don't think anybody in this room is going to talk about, we had one heck of a two and a half years we have had over the past couple of years. And thank you, everybody in this room, who worked with their children during it. By the way, we're on one of the, thank you for giving me the time, sir.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, I will. I apologize. Think about all the folks that we, you know, we were able to have our children in school. There are needs, we are not wasting money. And my gosh, when teachers get 1.2% increase in a raise, we're going to say we're outrageously amount of money? Lastly, our budgets and the way we build everything, it is a moral document. What we fund is what we value. And if we're $100,000 away, and we built our budget, and we did cut 1.2 million as we continue to build the budget, I suspect that we will, Barry will, have no problem in funding what is, what I'm asking is, please, Barry residents, support the work of the school committee and the recommended budget apportionment made by the Quavon Regional School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes? So I don't think we're making a lot of progress on this motion, so I'm going to call for a vote now. We're voting, we're voting on an amendment to the main motion, all right? So if you vote in favor, you want the school budget on the main motion to be 6.119 million. And if you vote in the negative, you want to stick with the original recommendation of 6.090, about a difference of $109,000. So, does everyone understand what we're voting on? This is not a vote on the school budget yet, we're just voting on what the number is going to be. Okay. A simple majority on a motion to amend, so all those in favor of increasing the number to $6,199,860.81, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to raising the number, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay. This is close, so I'm going to need some counters. Can I get a couple? I got one volunteer, can I get a volunteer on this side? Thank you. I'm going to ask everybody who is in favor of the amendment to please rise.
It's a good question.
And now we're going to wait for our tellers to count them. Please be seated. I would like everybody who is opposed to the amendment to please rise. You may be seated. In the affirmative, we have 82 votes, in the negative, we have 56 votes. The motion carries. The original motion is now amended, so we are now debating the original motion, but with a new number. We're debating whether we're going to give the Quavon Regional School District $6,199,860, and the Monty Tech and QRSD debt service, as were originally stated, because those were not amended. Is there any further discussion of the school budget? I think we've had a good discussion. Maybe one, one last comment from Sam, and then we'll have a vote.
Thank you. I want you to know I'm having a lot of fun today. I don't know if you guys know, but the Town of Barry has a credit rating, well, I guess everybody knows the word FICO score. That means your ability to borrow money. Barry's FICO score, in reference to towns, is maybe 500. I'm guessing most of you have 700, 800 FICO score. That means that you can borrow money easily. Whenever the Town of Barry has to borrow money, it has to pay a penalty. Because it doesn't, instead of calling it-
Mr. Lipson, this is not a borrowing measure, I'm going to rule your comments out of order.
Well, I'm just trying to explain to-
I understand what you're trying to explain, but-
The position.
This is a, this is a motion to raise and appropriate, not a motion to borrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Sure.
Evening, Mike Paul, Air 330 Springfield Road. You guys have talked a lot about percentages and whatnot, but I'm wondering if we go before the COVID fiasco, and say we look at 2019 versus now, you know, how many students were there, and what was the spending per student? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing some heads shaking that they don't necessarily, they don't have the answer to your question at hand. He wanted to know this-
The question was, how many students now, and how many students in 2019 when things were supposedly running regular, and what was the spending per student in 2019 versus what we're proposing today? That was the question. And my second thing is, if you don't know that, then by what standards do we know if the spending is worth it, and if we're doing a successful job?
Thank you. Okay, I'm not hearing an answer to that question. Any other comments on the school budget? We're going to move to a vote. This is a vote on the original motion, but amended with a new number. So the numbers that we're voting on now are the 6.199 million dollar number. Everyone understand what we're voting on? Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the school budget, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion on the school budget, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries by a simple majority. We're going to move on to the next article. The next article in order is Article 1. Do you have a point of order? Do you have a point of order?
I would like to move Article 31 to be next as it's pertinent to everything else that carries forward at this point.
There's a motion on the floor to move Article 31, which is a motion to amend the code of the town of Barry up to here. So do we have a second on that? I do, okay, I have a motion and a second to move Article 31 to be next. Is there any discussion of that motion? Mr. O'Sullivan, please hold your point of information. Go ahead, Mr. O'Sullivan.
I see no valid reason to move that motion up.
Thank you. Court, did you have a point of order? And just to be clear what a point of information is, so a point of order is if you think I'm doing something wrong. And a point of information is you want to understand something about the rules of town meeting, but not necessarily about the information about the article. If you have a question about an article or that kind of thing, then you just come up and make a, a regular statement.
Courtney Robinson, 528 Wallinette Road. I believe that this is a point of order. My booklet has no Article 31.
It's on the last page, but the title is on the second to last page at the bottom. Mr. Anders, I need you to make a motion in writing. Can you come up and give the clerk a written motion to change the order in which we consider? If you look at the page on the left, Court, on the bottom-
It's the Article 31.
That's 31, and then the actual text is on the top of the next page. It's just-
amend the code of the town of Barry.
Yes.
Citizens petition, Neil Anders.
That's the one, yes.
Yeah, that's the one. That's what he wants to consider.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I got that. Resolution in support of the town of Barry voting to pass by law regulation-
Do you have a question?
May I?
No. Do you have a question?
Well, I don't believe that this-
That, that's the warrant article. We don't, we don't know what the motion is. The motion is going to be made by the person who proposed this warrant article.
That would have been a good reason to have the warrant articles posted earlier.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded and somewhat discussed to move the last Article 31 to be next in our consideration. All those in favor of moving that article forward, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to moving that to the front, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion fails. We're going back to Article One, which is an article about payment of bills from a prior fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
Article One, I move the town vote to transfer from landfill stabilization the sum of $51,618.36 to fund the payment of two health insurance bills from May 2021.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Because this is coming from a stabilization fund, it requires a two-thirds vote, just so you're aware. It's not a simple majority. Is there discussion? Mr. Lipson.
I'd like to know why a town that has plenty of money to give, to give the school system tons more money because they ask for it, I wonder why we are in a position, a fiscal position, where we have to pay from this new money, old bills? Doesn't it tell you something about the fiscal condition of the town of Barry? Isn't that important to know about considering that we have, we don't have a bond rating, that's our ability to borrow money, and we pay a penalty to borrow money? Something's wrong with the, the fiscal acuity, I guess, of the town of Barry, and I'm wondering why we're so generous.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Matt Urban, 330 Williamsville Road. Can you clarify the allowed use for the landfill stabilization account and why it's being used towards insurance?
I will. The landfill stabilization account was created when the landfill was getting ready to close. The landfill funds were used in the budget quite a bit, and they were trying to prepare for shortages in funds. And it was intended to be used just to fill stopgaps when we lost revenue from the landfill. So this is why it's being used now.
Any other discussion? As I said, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article One to pay bills from a prior fiscal year, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Article Two, another payment of bills from a prior fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
I move the town vote to transfer from landfill stabilization the sum of $6,509.80 to reimburse the Quabbin Regional School District for the purchase of a Combi oven at Ruggles Lane Elementary School purchased in FY22.
I'm sorry, who seconded that? Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this article? Seeing none, we can move straight to a vote. Again, because this is coming out of a stabilization account, we have to have a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. We've gotten to Article Three, which is the first of the articles that I've selected for use in a consent agenda, so you can sit down, unless it doesn't go that way. So let me explain the consent agenda if you haven't been to our last few meetings. This is a parliamentary tool that we can use to speed up the meeting and get out of here sooner. I collect a collection of warrant articles, and we bundle them together and vote on them all together, all right? So the rule for deciding whether something goes into this or not is pretty simple. I look for things that I don't expect to have debate, and I look for things that require simple majorities. The-
Back to Article Two.
No, we've just, we've, we're done with Article Two.
We only voted on one of the proposed motions plural, having to do with the purchase of a Combi oven for Ruggles Lane Elementary School.
That was the motion, yes. The motion for Article Two was-
Then there are three other, I believe.
No, that was it. So the way this works is that the warrant lays out what we're going to talk about. Someone makes a motion which falls within the bounds of what the warrant article talks about. We vote on the motion, and then we move on to the next thing. And if somebody doesn't touch everything that was in the warrant article, or they don't touch everything that was in the book, that's okay. They, they made a motion.
Okay.
We voted on it. Thank you. So back to what I was explaining is that this consent agenda. So there's a collection of six, seven, eight, nine warrant articles I'm going to walk through, and I'm going to tell you what they are, and give you a second to look them over. And if it's something you think that you do want to talk about, that's okay. You just, you just yell out, "Hold," and, and we'll take that one off the consent agenda and have a regular debate about it and a motion and all that stuff. But if nobody holds, then it goes on the consent agenda and we can kind of deal with those things together. Does everyone understand what I'm doing? Okay. So Article Three is the FY2023 Water Enterprise Fund, and the motion is that the town appropriate the sum of $579,246 for the Water Enterprise Fund funded from a variety of sources which you can read in the book. Article Four is the FY2023 Sewer Enterprise Budget, and this is a slightly, I'm going to read a slightly different number than it is in your book because it was a typo. The motion is that the town appropriate the sum of $797,750 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund to be funded from the following sources, and there are two sources listed there in the booklet. You see, the number I read is actually the number from the bottom of the right column. Article Five-
Mr. Moderator, am I to understand that you're putting both going on Article Three, Four, Five, and so forth without discussion, like in a lump?
Yes, that's the idea.
Without having-
Without discussion of each individual one. That's correct. And if there is an item here that you really want to discuss, you call out, "Hold," and we, we won't put that one on the agenda.
I thought, but without having had an opportunity to-
I just read it.
Well, my, pardon me, I don't know because I have a brain processing disorder, and I would appreciate if you could move through that so quickly.
Okay, I'll slow down. That's a good idea. So Article Five is a transfer from ambulance receipts reserved. Oh, and the motion is to pass over it and not do anything about Article Five. Skipping ahead, we have a couple that we have to deal with individually, so I'm taking you forward two pages to Article Eight. Article Eight is the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. The motion is that the town transfer the sum of $25,000 from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to operate the Public Educational Government Access and Cable Related Fund for fiscal year FY2023. Give you all a second to look that over. Article Nine is a collection of revolving funds. The motion is that the town vote to establish spending limits for revolving accounts established pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, and the Town's Bylaws, Chapter 48, Section 1, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, as laid out in the table in your booklet. So these are a collection of funds. Money comes into them, money gets spent out of them, and they don't require individual appropriations. That's why they're called revolving funds. They're on the budget every year. And then we have Article Ten, which is another revolving fund, and the language is a little different than what's in your book, so I'll read it slowly. It's a motion that the town vote to amend the code of the town of Barry, Chapter 48, Section 1, to eliminate the K-9 Cruiser Revolving Fund under and subject to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws, and transfer the existing balance of $14,199.44 into the Barry Falls Dam Revolving Fund. So this is a motion to move, get rid of one of the revolving funds and move its money into something that funds the same thing. And then we're going to take a giant leap forward to warrant Article 21. I'll read it while you find it. This is the Chapter 90 grant, so this has to do with spending state money. Article 21. The motion is that the town vote to accept any and all state highway assistance funds authorized by the state legislature and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division under the so-called Chapter 90 Highway Assistance Program to be expended for the maintenance, repair, and construction of town roads in anticipation of reimbursement under the direction of the Select Board for Work on roads located on the state aid primary system as approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division. You want to pull that one out? Okay.
This is two-thirds vote, then you have to give your vote to all the other ones.
Thank you, sir. I didn't notice that. We're pulling that one out. And we're going to 23. Article 23 is to choose town officers. The motion is to pass over Article 23 to choose the town officers, agents, and committees not elected because that's already been acted upon by you at the ballot box a couple months ago. And-
Mr. Moderator, are we on 23 now?
Yes. 23. So 23 is a motion to do nothing about warrant Article 23. And finally, in the consent agenda, Article 24, Reports from Committees. It's a motion that the town accept the reports from the town departments for the calendar year 2021, which I guess is right, which is this big book that hopefully some of you were able to get when you came in.
Fiscal year, right? Not calendar.
So that's our consent agenda. If you vote yes, we're going to pass the motions associated with Articles 3, 4, 5, 8, 9, 10, 23, and 24. Does everyone understand what we're voting on? All those in favor of passing this collection of articles, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
Mr. Moderator?
You're in the vote.
What articles are we going on?
3, 4, 5, 8, 9, 10, 23, and 24. I already have ayes. All those opposed to passing this collection of articles, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries. Thank you. I'll give this to you after, because I got to keep track of where we are. We just dealt with 3, 4, and 5, so next up is 6.
That's going to, you guys are going to make more amendments to it, right?
Yeah, we need to read the motion for herself.
So-
She's going to read the motion.
Article Six is the omnibus budget, and there's a, a motion in your book and a set of line items. Because the school budget was increased, some of these numbers are going to be changed. Does that make sense to people? So they've already figured out how they would do that, and what I'm going to entertain is a motion with different numbers than the motion that is written in the book. Who's making that motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'll make that motion. I move to amend the FY-
No, no. You're going, you're not making a motion to amend.
I get it.
You got it.
Six, I move the town vote-
Six, I move the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officials of the town for fiscal year 2023 for the period of July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023. For and further to raise and appropriate $5,713,973 and 10 cents, transfer $500,000 from ambulance receipts reserve, and transfer from premium capital improvement plan bond of $13,951.81 for the grand total of $6,227,924.92, as identified in the town's omnibus budget as follows. And there's a listing in your document.
Second.
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the FY 23 omnibus budget as follows. Reduce the reserve fund line item from $10,000 to $0. Reduce the town clerk's line item from $170...
Can I ask you to go slow?
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'll read the first line over again.
Yeah.
We will reduce the reserve fund line item from $10,000 to $0. Next, we will reduce the town clerk's line item from $171,586.71 to $141,586.71. Next, we will reduce the town roads and highway item from $637,230.38 to $625,709.98. Next, we will reduce the street light account from $33,000 to $23,000. And finally, we will reduce the parks and commons from $59,070 to $45,250.
That was a motion to amend. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to amend the originally written set of numbers to be the ones that he just read. Does everybody understand what we're talking about? So this is not a motion, we're not voting on the whole budget yet. We're just voting on changing the numbers from what was originally written in the book. All right? Is there any discussion of that? Mr. Lipson.
We have discussion, though.
You can have discussion on the amendment.
I guess I'm hearing that we have decided to take food out of our refrigerator and live with less because we wanted to fund the school budget that was higher than our finance organization thought was logical. And I asked this town, are we in the real world here? Is there something wrong? We are, the Town of Berry is in the toilet. This vote will even put it further in the toilet. We have no bond rating. It cost us money to borrow money. It cost us a premium. We can't get money from the USDA 40%. Now we have to live with less, and we're giving money away like we're making it in our backyards. I'm very disappointed.
Point of information?
Yes.
Do you have information on what the bond rating actually is that Mr. Lipson refers to refer to?
We don't have...
The Town of Berry does not currently have a bond rating.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Anders, please step up to the microphone. It was a point of order.
Ask the Finance Committee, where did these numbers come from? How did you arrive at them? In what, you know, pecking order? How did you, this one's getting bumped, this one isn't, you know? Some clarity on how you chose those numbers. Thank you.
The numbers were chosen off of prior year spend as well as where we thought, it wasn't an easy decision, like where we thought we could make cuts that were not going to affect overall services to public safety in the grand scheme of things. And we do hope to refund these positions and these reductions with free cash at special town meeting later this fiscal year, fiscal '23.
Jill Haverilla, 130 Oakham Road. So the reductions you're talking about now are as a result of our prior vote on the school budget.
Correct.
And when we were talking about that, we kind of generally said, oh, well, some services will have to be cut.
These are the services that are cut.
Yeah, so you knew that 15 minutes ago.
Please don't have discussions on the floor. Direct your questions to the moderator.
Oh, sorry. So we knew that 15 minutes ago, like what exactly the cuts were. It feels like a setup, is my comment. That's what it feels like.
Okay.
Matt Urban, 330 Williamsville Road. One of the points I was trying to bring up to the Select Board a couple times over the last six months' budget season. Last year, we passed a bylaw to do video recordings and post them and make them available to everybody. And originally, we kept it down to six committees because we thought that's what we could figure out how to handle to start with. On the floor, it got changed to everyone that exists in town. Knowing that now, they had, well, then, they had requested till April to then have a plan in place to start doing that. So last year, we voted and approved to reach that point in April. To date, it still hasn't started. And the reason is, the Town Administrator's Office does not have the resources to put together everything necessary to properly do a program where our volunteer committee members will understand how to do that. Because we can't pay someone to attend every committee to do it for them. So when you start talking about lack of services in the town and you start to compare to your school budget, there's a much bigger issue here because once they leave high school, they're dependent on the town to continue to let them know what the town's doing. It's done the minute they leave high school. There's no more school support for that. And if you're not going to give your town the budget necessary to continue to keep you informed about what's going on because you think you still got to pay someone to go to college and then come back and forget about their town business because we can't even give them a heads up something's going on. Cora Jean earlier said the same thing about not getting the warrant posted earlier, or the articles, more clearly, or the finance booklet ahead of time. It's difficult for people when it's last minute because we just don't have the resources to get it to people on all the platforms they're used to looking at. Website, Facebook, wherever it's going. So I just wanted to make an extreme point here about the fact that everybody's hurting this year in the budget. And I do believe we made a mistake when we approved the school budget's extra $100,000
I have it printed.
Mr. Moderator, can I make a comment?
Sir, hang on a second. So there's a, just sorry, there's a, there was a flaw in the, in the motion to amend. The motion to amend should also include a different total. So I'm going to give them a little bit of time to do that math and figure out what the different total number is so they can make that slight change to their motion. Since it doesn't substantially change the meaning of the motion, they gave all the numbers, we just didn't add them up, I'm not going to require an amendment to the amendment, if that's okay with the meeting. So let's assume that that gets fixed. And moving on with more discussion of the amendment to change the numbers from what was printed in the booklet.
Cora Jean Robinson, 528 Wallwynet Road. Mr. Moderator?
Please step closer to the microphone. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if you would kindly inquire of the gentleman who proposed the motion, his reasoning for proposing the numbers, the reduction, and the numbers that he did propose, in lieu of the numbers that are being proposed. He proposed reduced numbers, and if you would kindly inquire of him why?
Okay. So you're asking why he came up with these numbers? That exact question was already asked and answered tonight, so I'm going to move on and ask if there are any other discussion of the amended numbers. You can be seated. Okay, seeing none. We're going to consider the amendment. The motion on the floor is to amend the numbers that were originally printed in the booklet, reducing the reserve fund line to $0, reducing the town clerk's line to $141,586.71, lowering the town roads and highway item to $625,709, reducing the street light accounts from $33,000 to $23,000, and reducing the parks and commons from $45,250. Does everyone understand what we're voting on? All in favor of changing the numbers this way, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The motion carries. We're now back to the original motion, which is the motion for general government. And I think we really need to know what the total number is before we proceed.
The adjusted total, Mr. Moderator, will be $6,152,584.54.
I've got it written down, and I will hand it to you.
That is done by hand, if anybody wants to confirm.
Any further discussion on the motion for general government? Yes.
Johanna Swain, 81 Jackson Lane. I have a question for the Finance Committee. Are you going to the full levy? You're using all the RNA money for your omnibus here, and then the two other values that are coming out? So I just want to know if you're using your total RNA and then the other two are just supplementing your budget? So in other words, that will be done, the RNA will be used?
So I have a question of the Finance Committee. Does the Finance Committee have an answer?
The Finance Committee does not set the levy, but I believe we are going to use the full levy.
Yeah. The answer appears to be yes, we're using the full levy. Any other discussion of Article, the motion on Article six regarding the FY 2023 omnibus Hearing none, it simply requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We've already dealt with Article seven, so we're not going to talk about that. Yeah, hang on a second. Sorry about that. So the issue is that the, although the amendment said how we're not going to spend as much money, it didn't say exactly where the money was not going to now come from, right? We're going to raise, we're going to do some taxes, we're going to move some money from here to there. So I would ask for unanimous consent that we amend that slightly to clarify that all of the change in the number comes from the raise and appropriate part. So that lowers the raise and appropriate part to $5,638,632,070. Hearing no objection, that's what the motion will have been. That was an issue with Article six. We've dealt with six, seven, we dealt with eight, nine, and 10 in the consent agenda, so now things are going to get regular again. We're going to go to Article 11. Article 11 is the FY 2022 Snow Removal OTPT Account. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from stabilization the sum of $25,077.39 to fund the over expenditure of salaries used for snow and ice removal for fiscal year '22.
I have a motion and a second. Because this is drawing from stabilization, it requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion of this? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article 12 is the FY 2022 Snow Removal Expense Account. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from landfill stabilization the sum of $82,333.10 to fund the over expenditure of expenses used for snow and ice removal in FY '22.
I have a motion and a second. This, again, is drawing from a stabilization account, so it requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion of this? Mr. Lipson.
I have a question. I'm just asking, is now that we have some deficits that we just developed because of the school budget, and possibly that your amount might be less, from where are we going to get the money if we don't have funds because we put it in different places? Is there a cushion area that we can access money from? Or are we just stuck and having less snow removal?
Thank you, Mr. Lipson. This is a question regarding the FY '22, which is the money that we already spent last year. So this year's budget is not at issue for what we spent last year. Any further discussion? What's that? Sure. The motion was that the town... The motion was that the town transfer from the landfill stabilization the sum of $82,333.10 to fund the over expenditure of expenses used for snow and ice removal in FY 2022. Is there any other discussion? We need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 13. I move the town to vote to pass over Article 13.
Well, that was quick. Article 13, to amend Article 12 of the 2002 annual town meeting. Do I have a motion?
Oh, sorry. I do. Jumping ahead. I move the town to vote to pass over Article 13.
I have a motion and a second that we pass over this article. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Article 14 is to amend Article 11 of the 2003 annual town meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move the town to pass to vote over Article 14.
I have a motion and a second to pass over Article 14 with no action. Any discussion? Someone would like to know the reason?
After further discussion with the DPW, the funds that have been on the books for some time are allocated to projects.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Article 15 is to amend Article 19 of the 2004 annual town meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move the town to vote to pass over Article 15.
I have a motion and a second that we pass over Article 15. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I'm beginning to see a trend. Article 16 is to amend Article 30 of the 2021 annual town meeting. Do I have a motion?
We're off? There we go. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town to vote to rescind the vote under Article 30 Town Hall Roof of the June 15, 2021 annual town meeting, returning $37,184 to the general fund.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of this?
We estimated high, the roof repair came in less than we expected, so we have money to return to the general fund.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Article 17 is a capital request for the, to purchase and equip a new ambulance. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to borrow the sum of $305,000 to purchase and equip a new ambulance.
I have a motion and a second that the town borrow the sum of $305,000 to purchase and equip a new ambulance. Is there any discussion of this? Yes, sir.
Mike Paulier, 330 Spring Hill Road. I was just wondering, how many ambulances do we have now, and what's wrong with the fleet we have?
The question is about our current ambulances.
So we currently have two ambulances. The life expectancy of an ambulance is about six years for the town. We alternate them from call to call. We do about 900 ambulance calls per year, primarily transport to Worcester, so our average, we average about three ambulance runs per day at 65 miles round trip, so they get beat up pretty good. We're looking to replace the 2016, which has already hit its service life of six years. And currently, if we signed a contract today, the build time for a new ambulance is two years, with the potential of it going to potentially a little more than two years, depending on when we get in the cycle. So if we pass this tonight, we won't actually see the new ambulance for two more years.
We have a follow-up question.
So if we sign the contract, when do we have to actually become liable? When you receive it, in two years or now?
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't something that's going to happen for two years? And just out of curiosity, I know you said you had two ambulances. What's our R&amp;M per ambulance for the last few years? Is it growing up gracefully or greatly, or no? Your repairs, rebills for your ambulances, are they growing, are they increasing, or not really?
So the question is about the repair and maintenance of the ambulances?
So we just received a new ambulance we purchased in the town meeting of 2020. It just, it took 16 months, 17 months to come in, so that one's brand new, we haven't had any issues with it. But the one we're looking to replace is costing about $45,000 a year between maintenance and upkeep.
Any other discussion?
Correct. I meant $25,000, not $45,000, sorry, $25,000.
So this is authoring us to borrow, they're going to lease to buy this thing in a couple of years? Yeah. Please speak into the microphone.
You said they have a six-year life, while you're spending $25,000, so that's $150, and we've got to pay $300,000 for a new one? Wouldn't that last longer than six years?
So the hope is that they'll last longer than six years, but I can't, I can't give you that, obviously, due to the conditions in the, of our roads and the distance that they have to travel to the hospitals, the conditions of the city roads as we're driving through Worcester, they're not any better than any other roads. So I can't guarantee, the one we have now is already six years. Obviously, we don't have to put that much maintenance in when they're new, but the last two years, the one that we're looking to replace, has been getting pretty beat up. The one we replaced last in October, the ambulance actually died over the summer, was unreparable, so we went down to one ambulance, which caused us to have to use mutual aid significantly. We are fortunate, the town of Rutland let us borrow, they have three ambulances, they have a spare, they allowed us to borrow one. So we were able to use Rutland's ambulance pretty much over the summer last year to get us by to the new one came in. I believe at this point, by the time this new one comes in, we're going to be in the same situation that the one we're looking to replace now will probably be to the point where it's unreparable, or repair will cost, it won't make financial sense to keep it on the road.
I have a question in the back.
I'm Pat Koval, I live on Oakham Road. At one time, ambulance receipts went into an account. Is that not true anymore? For the purpose of buying a new ambulance? Why not? To fund the budget?
Please don't have discussions on the floor. The question is, where do ambulance receipts go and why not here? Can you answer that question, please?
I don't understand. What is the, so the ambulance is not part of the budget?
Correct. Correct. The ambulance receipts funds offsets the cost of the ambulance budget, and the capital items like ambulances come out of raise and appropriate. Or the last one we bought, we used free cash, and we purchased the ambulance in free cash in 2020 at the town meeting.
But just tonight, you were using money from the ambulance account for other things?
To fund the budget.
Only the ambulance budget.
The payment for the ambulance is not coming out of the ambulance.
But I thought there was money from the ambulance account.
Please don't have discussions on the floor. If you have a specific question, ask me.
I thought money from the ambulance account was used to pay for something other than ambulance expenses tonight.
Okay. I'll get that question answered for you.
Thank you.
The ambulance receipts earlier tonight were used to pay for what?
The ambulance receipts earlier tonight were used to pay for the ambulance budget.
Personnel, equipment?
Personnel, supplies, equipment, maintenance, electricity for the station, everything but diesel fuel.
But not the vehicle itself?
Correct, not the vehicle.
Okay. Any other questions? As I was starting to say, this is an authorization to enter into essentially a lease, which is borrowing. Borrowing items require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. That takes us to Article 18, which is a capital request for the purchase and equipment of a new fire truck. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to borrow the sum of $700,000 to purchase and equip a new fire engine, fire truck.
I have a motion and a second that the town borrow $700,000 for a new fire truck. Is there any discussion? Yes.
So this article, we have two fire stations, one in the center of Berry, one in South Berry. This article is to replace the fire engine in South Berry, which is primarily responsible for the fire protection of South Berry. It does travel across the town if there's a fire anywhere in town, but primarily, it's the first engine in the South Berry. The truck was purchased in 1990, they got about a 20 to 25-year service life, it's already 32 years old. In a normal year, a fire truck replacement is 10 months, currently because of COVID and all, all the things that have come with that. Like the ambulance, it's two years to get a new fire truck. The truck, as in 1990, is custom-built. They don't make parts for it anymore, so repairing it is becoming challenging. We're very fortunate, our town mechanic's been able to keep it on the road, but we're getting to the point where we can't get parts, such as windshields, door handles, stuff like that. It is corroded, and you can imagine, 32 years, driving through the salt and the sand, it is getting pretty corroded. It does need to be replaced soon. However, again, it's two years from the day we sign a contract until the truck would be delivered. We would not be responsible for making that payment, the first payment, until the truck was delivered, but we would lock in the price at today's price. Talking with the fire truck manufacturers, they're saying that by December to January, there's going to be a 7% increase to the cost of fire trucks. So if we wait another year or at a special town meeting, we'll be looking for $749,000 for the same truck we could sign a contract with tonight. I know it's a substantial amount of money, it kind of makes me sick to my stomach that that's how much the trucks cost. We purchased the same exact truck in 2019 to replace the engine in the center of Berry, it was $525,000 for the same exact truck, that just shows you how much the truck has gone up. And they're saying that even by next year, if we wait another full year, we could be looking at another 7% on top of the 7% that we're going to be seeing in this December to January. They can't give me an exact date.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Marshall.
Chief, could you tell us how that fire truck would be paid for? I mean, there is a plan that we would, you know, become involved in?
Yes, so historically, we've purchased our fire trucks through bonds. The truck manufacturers have a lease purchase program where you essentially just, it's a, it's a payment program through the truck manufacturers. Most communities opt into that, the interest rates are competitive with any municipal bond. And my, my recommendation to the Select Board and Finance Committee would we, that we would do a seven-year lease purchase program for that engine. We have four fire engines, and then going forward, that we just continuously replace our truck and get on a replacement program. The town of Berry had always replaced fire trucks in five- to seven-year increments. In 1999, we bought our last fire engine, and we never bought a fire engine again until 2019. So we went 20 years without replacing any engines. Now we're at the point where we have some considerable maintenance issues with our older trucks. I believe also going forward, the South Berry has two fire engines. We have disadvantage due to our fire stations. They make a standard-sized fire truck that's a little bit cheaper to buy, they do not fit in our stations. Our trucks that we have to buy have to be custom-built, which does add some cost to the truck. We also look at trying to build a truck that could last 30 years instead of the standard 20 to 25, which I feel like the spec that we have will make 30 years. Also going forward, have we got a spec truck for South Berry that, the other engine down there, I would, I would be very comfortable with replacing with a used fire engine at some point down the line. So I believe one, one new engine for South Berry would be warranted, and then, you know, as we go forward, probably a used engine would be acceptable. The other engine that we have in South Berry, in 2017, the engine's motor blew, we couldn't get a new one, we couldn't get it repaired because it was a 1987, so we purchased a used fire truck that was able to fit down there. So the truck that, the other truck that we have in South Berry is, you know, it's got 101,000 miles, which for a fire truck is a substantial amount of miles due to use as a used truck. It's also not a truck that was specced for the town, so there are some things about it that we wouldn't have purchased if we were going to buy a new truck. There's a lot that goes into building a fire truck special, specialized for the town, such as water, equipment, you know, size of the station, stuff like that.
Thank you.
The other thing I'd like to add is, we have been trying to replace this with grant funding. We currently have a grant in as we speak. They're supposed to start making grant award announcements in the next two weeks, and every week for about six to seven weeks, they'll make grant award announcements. I have a suspicion we may be in the running for a grant replacement. My plan would be, if this were to pass tonight, we would not purchase any truck or sign any contract until the grant was fully expended. In the event we got the grant funding, we would put, I don't believe the grant would cover 100% of the cost of the truck, but it would cover a substantial amount, we would put that towards it, and then offset the remaining balance with, with the raise and appropriate. Again, this, we wouldn't make the first payment for two, for two years.
Thank you.
The other night, on the Selectments Meeting, it was mentioned that there was a discount if a couple of pieces of apparatus were bought, ambulance and the truck. Mr. Moderator, can we find out what that discount might be?
Yes, Neil brought up a good point. The more vehicles you buy at once, the more of a discount you can get. By purchasing an engine and ambulance together, there is a discount. However, the price of fire trucks and emergency vehicles are changing every single day. I cannot get the, the dealer to give me an actual number until we're ready to sign a contract, but he would expect to be between, and don't quote me, somewhere between $12,000 to $20,000 off either vehicle if we purchased two at the same time. But I can't give you an exact number until we have a contract.
Thank you. Is there a follow-up question?
Please, Mr. Moderator. This is why I wanted the Article 31 to turn up before we were talking about this. We're, we're looking at a new ambulance, I mean, a new ambulance and a new fire truck, both substantial numbers, and we have, how many vehicles are upside down right now with the fire department on loans? Three. When I say upside down, we have loans that will mature after the implement is in the crusher. And I think that's a germane subject to bring up, to let everybody be fully aware of what's going on, if you would.
So a question was asked, you can answer it or not, you don't have to.
Well, I would like to just mention that there is, from a financial standpoint, that we looked at the Finance Committee, there is risk with adopting a new ambulance and a new fire truck and having those loans come online in the same fiscal year. The town does have short-term debt. Of that short-term debt, we have three fire apparatuses, one being the new engine, and also an ambulance, where the, it's a rough number, it's about a half a million dollars in debt. One of the reasons the Finance Committee voted unfavorable for this purchase, it wasn't that the town needs a fire truck. Chief Legowski made a very good appeal, it's more so looking same as the, with the school, it's looking at the financial aspect and, and what the town has. We made the recommendation that, that the town has to come up with a plan to reduce their short-term debt before this, a new truck is taken on-boarded, and, and try to not have vehicles become upside down. The ambulance that is a 2016, the town still owes $120,000 on that vehicle. And there's a few other apparatuses that we owe a good amount of money on that'll probably be put out of commission before the, the bonds are paid, or the loans are paid.
Thank you. Any other discussion of this? This is authorization to borrow, we need a two-thirds majority.
I have one more other question. What was the loan term for the truck versus, because the ambulance was three years? Seven years?
The ambulance was seven, but it could be put out to 10.
So there's no loan term in the motion, so that would be decided later.
Understood.
As I was saying, this is a motion to borrow, it requires It requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of borrowing $700,000 to purchase and equip a new fire truck, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries. Takes us to Article 19, which is a capital request for an HVAC replacement at Station 2. Do I have a motion?
This is my last one for the night, I promise. I move the town to vote to transfer from landfill stabilization the sum of $18,000 to pay for the replacement of the HVAC system at Fire Station 2.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just for everybody to know, our HVAC system at Fire Station 2 suffered a pretty catastrophic failure over the winter. One of our firefighters happens to be an HVAC technician. He was able to get it band-aided to get us through the winter, so it just needs to be replaced. It was purchased in 1982 and installed, and so I think it's met its service life.
Thank you. The motion is to draw from stabilization account, so it requires a two-thirds majority. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to transfer $18,000 to pay for replacement of HVAC system at Station 2, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Takes us to Article 20, which is a capital request for the Ruggles Lane parking lot. Do I have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town to vote to transfer from landfill stabilization the sum of $54,000 to pay for the replacement of the parking lot at Ruggles Lane Elementary School.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of this? Hearing none, I'll clarify that this is drawing funds from a stabilization account and therefore requires a two-thirds majority, just like the last one. All those in favor of this capital request, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. That takes us to Article 21, which is a Chapter 90 grant. I don't know why this requires a two-thirds vote, but go ahead and make your motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept any and all state highway assistance funds authorized by the state legislature and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division under the so-called Chapter 90 Highway Assistance Program to be expended for the maintenance, repair, and construction of town roads in anticipation of reimbursement under the direction of the Select Board for work on roads located on the state aid primary system as approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division. And further, to authorize the treasurer-collector with the approval of the Select Board to borrow money from time to time during fiscal year '23 up to the reversible amount for the period from July 1, '22 through June 30, '23, in anticipation of reimbursement of said highway assistance in conformity with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 6A.
I have a motion and a second, and now I see why there's a two-thirds vote required, because it does authorize borrowing on a temporary basis. So is there any discussion of this motion? Since it requires, since it allows borrowing, we need two-thirds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Brings us to Article 22, which is the treasurer-collector borrowing. Do I have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town to vote to authorize the treasurer-collector with the approval of the Select Board to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2022, in accordance with the provision of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 4, and to issue a note or notes, as may be given for a period of less than one year, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 17, and to authorize the treasurer-collector to enter a compensating balance agreement or agreements for fiscal year 2023 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53F.
I have a motion and a second on treasurer-collector borrowing. Because this is borrowing, we need a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. We've already dealt with Articles 23 and 24. We're in the home stretch, folks. We're into the citizen petitions. You'll notice that these read a little differently in your booklet, if you were lucky enough to get a booklet, because these are being made by citizens. We don't necessarily know the exact language of their motions. The first one is to amend the code of the Town of Berry. It's a citizen petition from Richard McDonald Jr. Do I have a motion?
Richard McDonald Jr., 57 Hubbardston Road. Mr. Moderator, to see if the town will vote to change the zoning district for property located at 323, 377, 395 Stetson Road to business commercial, which is now a business, been a business for 60 years, and it's the Upper Deck Bar and Grill and a repair shop.
I'm sorry. So you're making a motion. Sounds like you're getting into discussion. I need a clear motion, and it's important to you that the motion include all the gobbledygook about plans and stuff. Otherwise, this isn't going to count. So let me pick you up. You said 323, 377 to 395 Stetson Road, Assessors Map E, and then pick up from there.
Lot 31, Map H, Lot 173, and described in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, Book 49455, Page 387, and Book 54561, Page 186, to business commercial.
That's all you need to say. So I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second on this. Before we get to discussion, this is a zoning change. Yep. This is a zoning change. Zoning changes need to be reviewed by the planning board at a hearing. Has the planning board, is there a representative of the planning board here to tell us how you ruled at your hearing? Yes. Yes, please.
So we voted favorably, but I also want to make the acknowledgement that the planning board submitted, Selectmen submitted to the proposed amendment to the planning board on Tuesday, June 24 at 8:53 PM. So we weren't able to make the deadline for the Berry Gazette until the following week, and there's a 14-day requirement. So that 14-day would have been met after the town meeting. So we had the hearing last Friday to at least, you know, to accomplish the goal as best we could, but I just want to acknowledge that that 14-day requirement had not been met. So that's something the state attorney general might flag, but otherwise, I don't see any reason not to proceed.
So has a copy of the report from the planning board been filed with the town clerk? Yes. So just so everyone understands, there might be a technical problem with this. If there is, the attorney general will tell us. It should not affect whether you vote up or down on this tonight. So do we have discussion of this? Do you want to tell us what this is about?
Yeah, okay. So the purpose of this is to divide the property so I can sell one building and the other building, which I'm not able to do now under the current zoning. And the other note is that across the street from here is already business commercial, which is central mass self-storage, which was rezoned to business commercial a few years ago. And, I mean, that's the only...
Okay, great. Did you give the clerk the, you just need to come up here and sign your motion. Is there any further discussion of this? Because this is a zoning change, it requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries unanimously. That takes us to Article 26. Article 26 is a resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I would like to forego all the whereas and cut right to the chase, if I may. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Berry hereby adopts a resolution to support the work of the special commission relative to the seal and motto of Commonwealth established by a revolve and resolved in General Court 2020 to appointed by the governor to recommend changes to the current flag, seal of Massachusetts, and support a new respectful relations between all peoples who now call Massachusetts home. Town clerk shall forward a copy of these resolutions to the Senator Mark N. Ngoby and to Mark Pacho and Representative Antonio Gabriel, co-chairs of the relevant to the sealed motto Commonwealth, and to N. Ngoby and to Don Berghew. I request that they continue their support for the work of the aforementioned special commission.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Just to be clear, so everybody understands, we can't actually change the state flag here in Berry, but we can give a sense of the town and let the state know what this town thinks, and that's what this motion is regarding. Is there any discussion of this? I have a question. Yep, go ahead. Yep, you.
I apologize for ignorance, but what is wrong with our flag?
Please.
Can you pull it open so we can take a look at it?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Moderator. This has been an ongoing discussion for probably the last 50 years, but what's depicted there... Whoa, watch yourself.
That was exciting.
This was all rehearsed. What is depicted there is the white man's arm with a sword over a Native American. There's many, many issues with that colonialism to keep the natives suppressed. Thank you, Moderator. And to address this, we'd like to have, continue the work. This is, the moderator says, we're not going to change the flag here tonight. We're not going to make any resolutions to it. But what it is about is having that the commission gets a little tap on the, to keep moving and to get this now done after 50 years of discussing and discussing and discussing, to make this come to fruition. Ngoby and Don Berghew both voted in the affirmative to this resolve, and we want to encourage them to continue their moving in this regard. So I don't know, unless there's any other questions, I'd like, yes, please.
So how long has that been the state flag? And then, do we know the intent of the makers? I mean, everything you said, was that what they really intended, or is that just what people think nowadays?
I can't give you the exact year. It's like 1780s or something like that, but the intent was documented historically in some publications by the people who designed it. It was just one man who designed the seal and the flag, and he owned what he had done and how it was and where it all came from, where those images came from, and there is further documentation in a flyer that I handed out at the beginning of the meeting, if you want to dig into it further. I don't have it in the top of my head.
Any further discussion? This simply requires a, oh, yes.
I'd like to speak in favor of this resolution. A number of towns throughout Massachusetts have already approved this. It's a resolution saying that you're in favor of it. There's a committee that has been meeting for quite a while in the legislature, and the committee recently returned a recommendation to the people that they report to recommending that we consider, that the state of Massachusetts consider changing the seal because of these reasons. So it's not something we can decide here in Berry. It's, all we're being asked to do is whether we're for this resolution or against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I need a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries by a majority. Can you bring the written motion up? I need a written motion filed with the town clerk.
Do you see the workings of that, so we can do it at the end?
Sure. The, don't leave this room without giving Ellen all of your motions. That's the important thing. We'll move forward then to Article 27, which is a resolution, another citizen's petition. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I resolve to support the Town of Berry voting to mandate...
Can you speak a little more into the microphone, please?
Certainly. A resolution to support the Town of Berry voting to mandate that the town department has provide weekly administrative reports to the town administrator to be published in their entirety without omission. Accepting or to do so would violate the law or violate a person's rights to privacy. Under that, likewise, all committee boards and heads chairpersons be provided or other durational time report be published to the town website in a timely manner, not to exceed 48 hours from the date of receipt, so that citizens may be appraised of the workings of the town in a timely manner.
I have a motion and I have a, do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. I'll point out that requiring annual reports of all town committees is already in our bylaws, and we already addressed that earlier this evening, but the rest of this would be new, so it's worth talking about. Is there any discussion of this?
So if I may, this is a little cumbersome in the way it's written potentially, and I'm not saying that it's totally clear, but the intention is that we become appraised of what's going on in our town, so that there's not so much mystery to what is happening on a day-to-day basis. I understand that the reports that I, we're understanding were being filed with the town administrator, these on a weekly basis, are only verbal. So I think that that's something that needs to be cleared up. To have a verbal report, there's no way to track what was said down the road so that we can look back and say, well, you know, on such and such a date, this was what was needed and what was to proceed and what was to come afterwards. There's nothing written down. What I'm suggesting is whatever is written digitally or however, be just published so that citizens know what's going on, so we know when 32 or 67 is going to be closed for repaving, or that the bandstand is going to be worked on again, or whatever the situation is, so that there's clarity, so that there's a way for us to be knowledgeable and garner what we need to operate clearly and effectively in this town.
Any other discussion? Mr. Lipson.
I'm speaking in support of this, as many towns in the Commonwealth use this process, and in the age of computers, where all we have to do is push a button or add a bit of software to tell us that Route 32 is being worked on or something else, or to tell this gentleman that we don't have a bond rating, and we have no rating, and we're in the toilet, that would be in the, on the computer as well for everybody to understand, because Mr. Urban thinks, the second thought, is that we didn't know all the information that we should have, and we made a mistake when we voted the school budget. So it's just transparency. It's normal expectation from a town that we put in tons of money to, in for taxes and for other reasons, and I think it's pretty logical. It's like, it's not brain surgery. It's like, it's not brain surgery. It's just an expectation that I think we should have in 2022.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I would just add that.
I didn't recognize you. Cora?
Cor Jean Robinson, 528 Wallinett Road. I'd like to propose that.
Thank you, Sam.
Articles 27, 28.
We, we can only deal with one article at a time, I'm sorry.
I would like to propose that Article 27 be suspended at this time to a further date to take up a special town meeting to address this article in conjunction with other articles.
Okay. I, I think what we have on the, let me help you with the wording a little bit. We have a motion to table.
Table.
So a motion to table is to say, we're not ready to deal with this right now. We'll come back to it another meeting. And a motion to table, um, requires, it stops debate, so it requires a two-thirds vote. And you can't debate a motion to table. So now that a motion to table has been made, I'm going to need you to come up and actually write down motion to table, Cora. I, I'm going to need you to do that for the town clerk. She'll give you a piece of paper. We have this, oh, up here.
I withdraw my motion. Thank you, sir.
Well, no. So you can't do that with a motion to table. So, um, we have a motion to table on the floor. We're going to vote on the motion to table. All those in favor of tabling the motion on Article 27, please say aye. All those opposed to tabling the motion on Article 27, please say nay. I'm going to say that was not a two-thirds majority. The motion to table failed. We're going to continue debate on the motion that's on the floor, which is this resolution. Yes, you may speak.
So I'd like to add that this actually doesn't cost anything to do this. It's no extra work, no extra manpower. Actually, in part of this comes up another motion and it would simply be a single click. So whenever you send the report to the town administrator, it would automatically be published. So it's, it's no additional work and no additional expense.
But, but you said that it's going to be redacted to protect privacy, right? I just want to make sure I'm understanding what the motion is. The motion was that these would be redacted reports to protect privacy, correct?
That is correct. The department head would redact this before we transmit.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Urban.
Matt Urban, 330 Williamsville Road. Actually, it's my belief, Neil, that due to our current procedures, equipment, capability and training, this would become an excessive burden on the administrator's office at this point. Last year, all I did was ask him to record videos and get it online, and that hasn't happened yet. You're asking for them to vet and review every document that's being shared between the town administrator and the department head so it could be made public, which is an excessively labor, time-consuming effort to verify every word on that is legally public. So I'm just bringing up, it is a big burden on an office that is already undermanned.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do you like to respond to that?
Yes, I would. There are many, this is not something new. This is something done in many other towns around the Commonwealth. Somewhere in the percentage around 50 towns and cities are already doing this. Ever, and when I researched, you know, limitedly, I didn't go through every town, but every town that I did research, it was very clear that they were totally impressed with this and actually caused them to have less work once it's fully implemented. It's not going to happen day one. It's not something you're going to flip a switch and have it happen, you know, overnight. This is going to take some time to, to market and to manage it and to get all the department heads in line, to get everybody in line, get all of the ducks lined up, so to speak. It's, uh, it's a process. It's not a, it's not an on-off situation, but it is cost-effective and it's cost savings. Because what has happened, and if I were able to, I would be showing a video now, but I'm stood here. There, there's other towns like Amherst, uh, that have this and they are raving about it because it is actually such a benefit to them and, and so much other things, other issues that they had have been able to dovetail into this and been remedial to, you know, correcting a lot of flaws that they've had all the way along. So it's, it's not necessarily as, as cost-effective maybe as you're envisioning or it's going to be such a burden. From what the other towns are saying, that is not the case.
Uh, Ms. Marshall.
Um, yes, if this, um, I would just please point out to the public that these are resolutions. That would mean we resolve that we should ask the Town of Barry to look at voting to mandate town departments. It doesn't say that what is in this resolution will actually be the specific thing the town ultimately agrees to do. And I think when you say there are 50 cities or towns that do this, I just bring to your attention, there are 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth. So 50 is, is probably a minority. I think there's some good ideas in here, but again, this is a resolution simply saying that we should bring to the town some information about this in the future. It doesn't mandate the town to do anything tonight, even if this is voted. It's a re- resolution. And I think his other things are resolutions as well. And so there are things to think about, things to work to improve, but not necessarily tomorrow morning we are going to have to do, as, as Matt pointed out, what we couldn't possibly do. So I thank you, Matt, for your comments and thank you, um, Mr. Andrews for bringing some of this to our attention.
If I may, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
So, yeah, it's a resolve, but let's begin the conversation. Let's move forward, make things better. This, this whole thing for me, I had some health issues and I, you know, I said, look, I'm living here in this town. I've lived here 12 years. I'm a washer shore here, but I wanted to maybe make something a little better, leave something a little better for, for the future generations. And I see that this would be a, a, a step in that direction to give some transparency and to give some understanding of what takes place here in town. And, uh, so I would, I would like to second what Maureen has said is that this is a resolve. So it's the beginning of a conversation. So I ask for your affirmative vote.
So, that's interesting. So these, uh, this is not a bylaw change. This is a sense of the Senate, essentially. We're, uh, voting on whether we want the selectmen to start investigating the feasibility. Any further discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. I'm going to try that again with hands. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The motion does not pass. Article 28 is another resolution. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Uh, it is all to support the Town of Barry voting to mandate the town warrant be kept open for no less than 30 consecutive days prior to each town meeting to facilitate citizens' involvement. And whereas in the past time has been too limited, unclear as to when the warrant is open or closed, this petition is being presented, whereas it imperifies sound democracy to have clear and concise rules of governance and whereas avoid arbitrary capricious implementation of these timelapse being implemented.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of this resolution? Mr. O'Sullivan.
Uh, thank you. I, I think that the circumstances of special town meeting, typically we have a special town meeting once we, first of all, have free cash certified, which doesn't happen until late in the fall. We, we have to address financial issues quickly. Special town meeting, it's very difficult to put civilian petitions on. They require a lot more signatures because the intent really is to just clean up financial issues. In a 30-day, um, open warrant for that, really, it doesn't fit time-wise and I don't think it's a smart thing. For annual town meeting, I wouldn't have any problem with that at all. Um, but I think the motion as it is isn't, isn't wise to pass.
Mr. Lipson.
You know there is.
Mr. Lipson, would you like to offer an amendment to change this to only apply? Well, remember, this is a resolution. This is not a bylaw change. So, um, I, I don't know that it's warranted, but if you wanted to, you would be able to offer an amendment to change the language.
My intention is not to derail the direction of, of Neil Andrews, but there's a logical explanation by, uh, one of the selectmen that at a special town meeting, it might be a little cumbersome, but I think, I think at the annual town meeting, which we, which is the time that we give away all the food in our refrigerator, uh, uh, maybe 30 days might be logical. And I'm, and I'd like to make that amendment, however we go about doing that, but I'm sure I'll get lots of assistance.
Yeah, so, um, there's a motion. I, I need to address this. So there's a motion, uh, to amend. I would recommend you might, uh, amend by inserting the words annual town meeting before the word town warrant in the resolution. Do you say point of order?
This is a resolution, so it's not binding, therefore details and amendment do not matter.
That's not a point of order. That's, that's a point of discussion. That's not a point of order. That's a point for discussion of the amendment. So in a minute, you'll be able to say that. But there is a, there is an amendment on the floor to change the motion by inserting the words annual town meeting before town warrant. Is that correct? Sam?
Yes.
And you'll need to come up and write that down for our town clerk. Is there a second on the amendment? It's moved and seconded that we amend the language. Is there any discussion of the amendment? Now, Mr. Urban.
I just beg and plead that we know no more amendments on resolutions. The resolution is pretty much considered like a basis of design for the select board to consider in the future and negotiate with the whole town to then present a bylaw to you. So to amend this has very little binding other than you're adding in a thought that you're going to put on the table in the future anyway when you start talking about it. So it's just a suggestion, but feel free to continue to discuss if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Any other discussion of the amendment? All those in favor of amending the resolution to insert the words annual town meeting before the word town warrant, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. That motion carries. The resolution is amended. We're back to just debating the resolution. Mr. O'Sullivan.
Thank you. When we discussed this prior to the warrant being released to, to decide if we were favorable or unfavorable, the, the board did resolve that we would try to make every effort to give 30 days notice in annual town meeting. So as far as that resolution, we, we resolved to do so already for you people. We'll make every effort to give 30 days for the warrant to be posted and open before town, annual town meetings.
Sure. Yep. So the, the town clerk is just pointing out that when we have a 30-day open warrant, that really means 44 days before town meeting because the, it's 30 days, then they close and approve the warrant and then it can be posted and then we need another two weeks before town meeting. Mr. O'Sullivan.
Yes, we do understand that, but given town meeting, we know what annual town meeting is. We're going to be around the first, second week of June. So we can work from there and just start our, our discussion early and open the warrant early. That's really not a big deal. So that's easy to do. Special town, we don't always know when it's coming. We don't know when our free cash is certified. Some years, nothing comes up we need money for, so special town is, is just a no, but we can certainly push for 30 days and ain't no town meeting.
Any further discussion of the resolution? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amended resolution, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion carries. For Article 29, which is another resolution.
Mr. Moderator, may I? May I? Resolution to support the Town of Barry voting to mandate that the town place the town's financial records for all sources and uses of funds and all pertinent charts, records, information, declaratives regarding tiny, uh, town finances to be placed online on the town's website and said open source of information be done in a timely fashion, not to receive a one-week length delay from the availability and the posting of, are preferably done as a single right system. Whereas informed citizens make for contented citizens are citizenry and whereas the public action of Barry requires more transparency so that everyday workings of our town be open to all to see.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion of this resolution? Seeing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. I'm going to go by hands again. All those in favor of the resolution, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Sorry, I'm counting. The motion does not carry. Yes, what is your point of order? I don't, I don't get complete numbers on the hand count. I get, I count the number in favor and when the number opposed exceeds that, I stop counting. Uh, I think that we're on Article 30. Right? They kind of all look the same because they all just resolutions. So I think we're on Article 30, which is a resolution. Do I have a motion?
Resolution to support the Town of Barry voting to raise an appropriate borrowed transfer funds in the amount of $15,000 to clean up and take legal action on 1,000 West Street, uh, derelict property or take any action relative thereto. Whereas the Town of Barry has been requested of legal action on said property, has chosen not to accomplish the basics of remedying the public nuisance issued to address the potential for the site being a hazardous site waste 21E. Additionally, the site harbors further potential health hazards, building code violations, violations of fire department safety directives during the fire on said property and afterwards by not having taken such actions as it might have been needed to negate these impediments. And whereas the lack of the town to take responsibility to abate nuisance has brought harm to abutters and to other towns, persons alike, having to witness and, and the, these impediments.
Although the language does use the magic words "raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds," it starts with "resolution in support of," and therefore we are not voting on appropriating, borrowing, transferring of funds, we are only voting on whether we think that's a good idea. Does everyone understand that? Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Lipson.
Seeing this is a board of health issue, a fire department issue, a DPW issue, a town-related issue, and if this is not addressed properly, it might be a legal issue because the offended or the damaged parties may initiate an action against the Town of Barry because the Town of Barry is not paying attention to its responsibility. So, I think it's pretty cheap money to allow some funds and, and direct the building inspector, to direct the board of health, and to direct our legal term, legal organization to, to get on, to pay attention to this. One child gets hurt, one person gets hurt, all of a sudden we're at a jam, and we've got to call our insurance company, twiddling our fingers, saying that we went on top of it. This is a $12 million corporation called the Town of Barry. I think not paying attention to this means that we are asleep at the wheel, just like we are when we don't have a bond rating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Cora.
Point of information, is anybody able to describe this property in language other than 1,000 West Street?
So, the question is, what's the legal description of the property? Given that this is a resolution and not binding, I think a legal description is probably not necessary. Perhaps, though, Mr. Anders could give us an anecdotal description of the place that he's talking about.
Thank you. Yeah, it's right across the street from my house. I've been looking at this house, or remnants of it, or the burnt-out shell of it for 12 years. It's the Myra Hardica, her old house right across the street.
Please don't have discussions on the floor. I have a question from the back.
Yes.
John Chase, 120 Hardwick wrote, "Does the town own this property, or is it owned by somebody else?"
There's a question as to who owns the property. Mr. O'Sullivan?
The town does not own it yet. It's been in land court for years, and there's been a property line issue that's, that's trying to get settled. So, until we own the property, we can't take any action on it anyways.
Any other discussion? Mr. Baird, do you have a question? Hang on a second, folks.
I'm trying to imagine this property. I'd like to say something.
It's my last chance.
I'm recognizing our town council, even though he's not a citizen of Barry, to speak.
Hello. I'm not a citizen, but this may be my last chance to say anything at a town meeting. So, the situation you have is, is a house that's in crummy condition, let's be nice about it. And there are three avenues open to the town to deal with a house that's in crummy condition. One is through the board of health, one is through the board of selectmen, and one is through the building inspector. They are all very similar procedures. They involve a lot of steps to make sure, one, you know who the owner is, so you can give proper service. In this case, I don't think we absolutely know who the owner is, because there hasn't been anybody living in that property for quite some time. The second problem is, in this case, the taxes haven't been paid, so it's in what they call tax title. And the land court is moving like an elephant in a bog, and they are not promptly, fast, efficiently dealing with the request of the town's attorney that's dealing with tax title properties, getting it moved forward so that it can have the blessing of the land court to have the town proceed against this property. The town's board and the town's attorney that is dealing with this have been trying now for several years to get that approval, and once they get it, the problem may be resolved. The $15,000 that Mr. Anders has set forth here is probably way low. We had one situation several years ago in South Barry, it was a garage, I think, that burned. We were able to track down, in that case, who the owner was, and it involved going in with a constable to a nursing home and giving service to some probably little old lady, and probably scared the hell out of her. But we were able to proceed with that one. So, that property's sitting there with a lien on it, and I think it was more, much more than $15,000. And the, and the town was able, as a result of the action we took at that time, to level what was there, burned out, I think it was a garage, remove the junk and burned-out remnants of the garage from the property, and leveled the lot. This one here is going to take a lot more than that, and it's going to take a lot more time. It may be frustrating to Mr. Anders, and I know, if someone's got a piece of junk across from my house, I'd get upset too. But the $15,000 is not enough, and the authority is in the town's board of selectmen, board of health, or the building inspector. And the vote is meaningless, as far as what you're doing here tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
May I address that?
Briefly.
Counselor, would you give me a clarification of meaningless?
I believe he's referring to the fact that it's a resolution.
Can we move the vote? Well, I'm not sure if, if I still understand what that means, but what I can tell you is that the property is still being dumped on, there's still waste being thrown on that property, and the fact that it was an eyesore before, that was before the place burnt down. So, and 12 years ago, I was told the property was being seized for tax title, and I've talked to the select board, I've talked to the planning board, I was chairman of the planning board, and I've also talked to the building commissioner, and nothing has done. So, this resolve is to heighten the awareness, set aside the 15 grand, so when they do own it, when we can say this is ours, at least cursorily, you can clean it up. There's vehicles all over the property, 20 feet from the street, it doesn't take, you just head down West Street, come to a junk property on your right-hand side, that's it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I don't have a problem finding it out.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion does not carry. We're on Article 31, to amend the code of the Town of Bar... Well, okay. So, Article 31 says amend the code of the Town of Barry, but it, I think it's actually another resolution, right?
Yes.
Yes. So, it's a resolution. Go ahead.
Yes, a resolve to support the Town of Barry voting to pass a bylaw regulation that the town or its offices may not engage in the procuring of any loans that would exceed the life expectancy of the project or item for which they are appropriating the funds.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Again, just to clarify, this is a resolution, so we're not actually creating a bylaw tonight. This is a recommendation that the selectmen figure out how to do that. Is there any discussion? Mr. Lipson.
Can we ask that the chairman of the finance committee speak up?
Mr. Lipson would like to know what the finance committee thinks about this.
Well, I think, Mr. Lipson, we discussed this at one of our meetings, and we, we were unfavorable of this action at this time, the way, the way it's written.
So, the, the finance committee is unfavorable. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Lipson, if you're going to make comments, you need to go to the microphone.
The, the issue from the finance committee said that he's not, he will not, they will not recommend it the way it's written. So, perhaps the finance committee can get up and use the appropriate words and explain how, explain the words that would be necessary so that they would support it. Thank you.
So, that's a question, the finance committee?
I don't think, Mr. Lipson, I'm not prepared, nor is the finance committee discussed any language for the citizen's petition, we are going to be left with the unfavorable recommendation.
Any further discussion of this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion does not carry. Any further discussion of this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion does not carry. So, that's the last thing on the warrant. I want to call your attention to the, the fellow on the front of this book, who is our town council, and has been our town council for 50 years? I'm not kidding, it's actually 50 years. Did you ever figure out your little USB thing?
Years ago.
Did you, did you, I'm asking the sound guy, did you figure that out? Okay. I'm going to entertain a, a motion to dissolve the meeting, however, I would ask that you all, after the meeting is dissolved, hang here for just one minute.
Two and a half.
Two and a half minutes. So, I would entertain a, a motion to dissolve the meeting? I have a motion and a second to dissolve the meeting. All those in favor of dissolving the meeting?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. I, I hand the stage to our retiring town council, Attorney Jim Baird.
Thank you very much. It was my privilege last night to attend a retirement party that 20 wonderful people threw for me in recognition of those 50 years that I've been your town council. I brought a little prop that I had at the dinner, and it shows a list of all the selectmen. And if you go back to 1972 and come forward, you'll see I've been appointed over and over again by some, I don't know why they did it, selectmen. There's one year, just to be honest, one year I was not reappointed. Any of you that know Sue Landry, her father was John Maillus, he was a very well-known man in town, he was on the Board of Assessors, and his daughter, Sue, had gone to law school that year and graduated, and I thought he, he thought, I think, that it would be a wonderful experience for his daughter to be town council in the town where she was raised. Sue accepted that, and one year later, I got a call, "Please, Jim, will you come back?" So, Sue, I guess, found that it wasn't as much fun as I found. I have enjoyed it, I've loved the Town of Barry, you are the best, I tell you. I've been town council for other towns, none for 50 years, but the Town of Barry has always left a very special place in my heart. There's also a list here, all the, all the town clerks back to who knows when, and it shows the ones that were here since 1972. Ellen's the one that's here the longest, and she's been an absolute wonderful person to deal with. And then there's another list down below that lists, and they all had different titles. Jessica's presently a town administrator, and if you go back in time, you'll see where the title changed, 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 changed. That June of 1972, when I was asked by Franny Cranston and Arnold Tripple, two attorneys from Barry, Arnold was at one time the town council, Franny Cranston was an attorney in town, he was your town moderator for years, and Paul, his son, as you know, has also been town moderator before. Josh was very gracious to take over that responsibility. So, I've got all those people back through the years to 72, and I'd like to point out the one gentleman who, his name is John Sizer. No, John, John Sable, I'm sorry. As you get old, you forget things. So, John, John Sable was like the clerk to the board of selectmen. And after I had said I would be willing to be the town council, I came to your wonderful white town hall building that burned down shortly after that, and met with him, and learned some of the things about Town of Barry that I needed to know. He was like a father to me. I loved the man, I learned a lot from him. He told me where the closets were that I shouldn't open, he, he told me about things that I should and shouldn't do, and, and then he kind of ended it with this wonderful piece of information. He said, "We're having a town meeting in June of that year." And one of the articles is an article to adopt for the first time a zoning bylaw for the Town of Barry. At that time, most of the towns in Massachusetts had not adopted zoning bylaws, and it was a big rush, they passed special legislation allowing it, the towns were all being hustled by different places to sort of sell the town on their version of what a town should have for a zoning bylaw. And so, they had a bylaw, I'd never looked at the bylaw until the town meeting night over in that nice white building. And so, the town only needed a majority vote. Ever since then, anytime you wanted to change that bylaw, you needed two-thirds. So, it was my pleasure to watch the town, who I had not met completely, vote and approve, accepting that zoning bylaw that night. There was one person who stood up and expressed his discontent with the idea that the town was adopting a zoning bylaw, and that was a gentleman named Joe Higgins. And any of you that know Ronnie's, I think it's his grandfather, knew that Joe was quite a character. He was probably related to Sam. In, in some way, Sam, he must have been. In any event, the, the group of people up here, I have to tell you, I would not have been able to do my job, I would not have enjoyed it as much, I would not still be here, and I would not be your town council if it hadn't been for these wonderful people. And as a going-away present, because this is my last town meeting, I love you all, and I've done something. I started 50 years ago. I enjoyed every day. It's been a while since '72. The time has slipped away. First Barry Town meeting was special for me. Many articles were passed since then, some not meant to be. You will be taken care of, you will be treated well. The future's looking good, yeah, my friends of Barry Town. And you're all shining, all my friends, it's true. I step into the future, with me I carry you.